Okay, I'd like to call the Select Board Meeting of November 9th. Yeah, I wish, November 9th, to order by roll call.
Smith.
Yep, Kilcoyne, present by phone.
Really?
Sorry, John, I thought you were sleeping.
Crass and crass. Okay, all that can, Pledge of Allegiance, please. It may be a little bit of a challenge this evening with Mr. Kilcoyne on the phone. I like that as much as I like Zoom meetings.
Yeah, I know, I don't either.
Yeah, okay, fine. All right, so we're gonna skip over our approval of minutes and we're gonna move right to number six on our agenda, which is, no, we're not doing number six, we're doing number eight, where Mr. Meridian is going to talk to us about a stripping program he has. See, John, wish you were here. Don't get.
Thanks for being accommodating. We ended up moving our DPW board meeting from yesterday night to tonight through the election, so, there's a buzz over there for seven. So what do you have in front of you, assuming you guys have a copy of this? So this is something that Bill and I kinda came up with. If you remember, we were awarded a pretty decent sum of money through the Shared Winter Streets Grant Program back in 2020, by 2020, I think? And what we found, you know, with the staff turnover, after we started to look at what was outlined in that grant, a lot of the work that was proposed was gonna be duplicate of work with a larger revitalization project. And we didn't feel like it made sense to do like about half of that work and then come in and start ripping things out, bury lines and add sidewalks and then have to redo that work. So this was something we kinda came up with, would be a decent use of a little bit of that money. Now, I'll be very, you know, clear about that, it's a very small amount of that money. So the plan itself costs, I think, about five grand, and again, it's all grant money, so it's nothing out of a sterling budget. And then, right now, the estimate for the work that you see is about fifteen, and that includes sandblasting the existing lines away and getting a nice fresh start. So one of the goals of this plan was to really organize the parking downtown. So right now, in forever, as far as I know, there's only been a single double-yellow line up the middle. There's never been a white fog line, and there's never been defined parking spaces. So of course, with the amount of businesses that we have downtown, we have a number of crosswalks. And those crosswalks currently have, you know, some small measures to try to prevent people from parking right on top of them, but really, they're not very visible, and people park right on top of them anyways. So pedestrians going out to the crosswalk have cars on either side of them, they're trying to poke their heads out as people are coming around the corner, particularly right down here, at the intersection of Park Street. So really, what this is gonna do is it's gonna define where vehicles can park, more importantly, it's gonna define where vehicles can't park. And actually, through this plan, they estimated, based on the, some photos that they had, and some aerials, and some, you know, onsite walks they did out here, about thirty-eight parking spaces currently. And just organizing it and putting it together, we have forty-six parking spaces on street presented in this plan. So of course, there's a little bit of parking down Route 12 on the straight part where the sidewalk is, as you come around the corner past Emma's, which really no one has parked before. The other benefit here is we're putting those lanes to eleven feet, the travel lanes, which is gonna act as traffic calming. So we have Route 12, it's fifty miles an hour, it shoots right down to twenty-five as you hit Village Pizza pretty much, or hit sixty-two, really to kinda slow everybody down, it kinda acts to funnel those lanes in a little bit, keep everyone going a little bit slower, narrower lanes act to slow down and calm traffic. So that's kinda the, was the ideas that we gave them, they gave us this plan, I had bounced back a bunch of comments and they revised it, and I really wanted to get your guys' comments on it. We'll be talking about it at the DPW board meeting as well, but I'm open to any comments, I just thought it was, be nice to organize that parking up a little bit.
So water-based paint, Ryan, is there anything?
It's water-based paint, solely because we have a bigger project coming. And there wasn't, it didn't make sense to thermoplastic, and we had an estimate for thermoplastic, it was in the thirty-five to forty thousand dollar range, it just didn't seem to make sense.
And once the next phase of the big project is done, is it gonna affect how many parking places that we?
That I don't know, because there's gonna actually, I believe that there's some bump outs in there, some more granite, some more curving, and some more bump outs at that point, that would essentially replace some of these, as they call them gore areas, the hashed areas, they'd be more physical, less paint. This, I kind of envisioned as a, you know, three to five year until we get to that point, just a nice way to organize the downtown.
Questions, David?
No.
John, any questions on?
No, I just, I'm not, I didn't quite catch what the timing was, but I know it's with some overlap, it looks pretty efficient. What is the timing on this line?
That's a bit of a tricky one. We could possibly get them in, I'm hoping to get, if the weather holds out, at least get our new roads painted, the ones that we're paving. And there's the potential that we could try to push it through, I don't think it would hurt to wait till the spring. You're gonna get a better product for longer if we waited till the spring, you know, essentially when we plow water-based lines, it goes away pretty quickly. It's something that we could easily have in the pipeline as like one of the first projects to get off the ground. I do envision this work being done at night, so I don't know if it'd be one night or two nights, but just with the amount of traffic, it's not worth trucks driving over our new crosswalks and tracking white paint down the road, or, you know, we'd be able to give everyone enough notice, park off Main Street tonight, go behind the fire station, come behind the town hall, so that we can actually paint these lines. So up in the air, a little bit on timing, we're a little bit late, unfortunately, I think it really depends on the weather.
Okay, thank you.
That would be my guess, is that we'd wait till spring.
I'm leaning that way at this point.
Great minds, you know what I'm saying. Anybody else have any questions for Ryan?
All right, okay. Dick Shepherd, any further definition of the sidewalks that you plan to, not necessarily right away down the road?
That would be, yeah, part of that revitalization project, so I don't know, I don't, not super up on that as far as how the sidewalks are gonna look, but I believe what it's doing is redoing the sidewalks on both sides, so that they're equal in width, and what do you mean by defined, I guess?
Well, coloration.
Oh, I think it would be concrete sidewalks.
Sidewalks, the crosswalks.
Oh, crosswalks, oh, 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 sorry, they're thinking sidewalks. No, they, white with hash lines is what we're proposing. I mean, as you know, some towns select a color to fill the inside instead of doing the hash lines, we could look into that if that's something you're interested in. At this point, we're simply proposing the latter style, as they call it.
I just remember almost running over a comment here a few months, well, maybe about a month ago.
Everybody, we just get in the line, everybody wants to.
And that's, that's something that, that we can talk, one of the things I had asked them was colors for like, what we have is the green area right now, they're, right now they're just proposing that to be hashed as well, so everything's kinda laddered and dashed. Say we wanna paint them red if we think it resembles an apple or something like that, we can choose to do that, you know, that's our choice, I believe. Do you know MUTCD, does it matter?
I don't think it'll meet the requirements, I think.
Okay, so then, there you go.
Even infilling, I don't think.
Perfect, I was gonna, that was what I was, firstly I was gonna look at, is if it meets the requirements.
What's infilling, when you, it's very slippery to motorcycle riders.
Very true.
Oh, then we don't wanna do it.
And it wears away kinda unevenly, it looks funny after a while.
That might be something too, once the revitalization gets going, that you might wanna look in and upgrade them or something like that, so.
Right, I know some towns go to like a stamped brick look or something like that.
But for now, I'm with you, just go simple.
Okay.
But that's, that's our opinion.
Yeah.
But I would entertain a motion to approve Ryan's presentation as far as the striping.
I have another question.
All right.
Joe King.
Hey, Joe.
How are you?
Good.
You know I usually ask questions.
It's okay, I'm here to answer.
Well, we turn into being as bad as Hudson in terms of lane width after we moved down to eleven, because it is awful.
Okay.
And I don't know whether you've been through, but they.
I haven't, I know there's a roundabout there, I haven't.
There's a roundabout followed by their Main Street, and their Main Street is filled with businesses.
Yep.
Parking both sides, very narrow lanes, it's awful.
Okay.
So I don't know what the lane width there is, but.
Yeah, so it's, it's interesting, I had actually proposed ten-foot lanes to them and they came back with eleven. I don't know what that lane width is either, I would hope that we don't become Hudson if Hudson is terrible. I think one good thing is.
Hudson is booming, but the street.
Right, right. One good thing is, if you look at the plan, I think there's really only one area where the parking actually opposes itself on both sides in the same area, other than that, it's very much staggered, so that may help a little bit. Because of the amount of side streets we have and crosswalks and driveway entrances, it's tricky, you can't really line that parking up. So really, it's four spots here, six spots here, three spots here.
Well, that would help.
So that should help, yeah.
Additionally, Brian, I'd just like to add with the narrower lane widths through town, it does in fact slow traffic down, I come through Hudson every day on my way home, and it's good for the businesses because people don't generally use the crosswalks like they should, they're coming in between the cars and the traffic is at a slower pace at that point.
Right, right.
That's also a danger in Hudson, because people come out from between parks.
I understand that, but we can't regulate people.
Right, unfortunately.
Well, we could try.
Some people have death wish.
No.
Ah, maybe. Are you done, Mr. King?
I think I'm done.
Okay, anybody else have a question or answer for Mr. Meridian? Then I would entertain a motion to approve this striping plan proposed by Ryan and the DPW.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant, aye. Thank you, Ryan.
Guys, appreciate it.
Good luck tonight.
Thank you.
So now, I would entertain a motion to exit our regular meeting to open a public hearing regarding the release of Chapter 61 land on 53 Holden Road.
I move in those words.
Seconded.
So is, yeah, Rob, come sit down, too. So, and who's, who's here to speak to that? Or you're just here to listen?
I'm here to see what I can answer, if anybody has any questions.
Okay.
I think it's straightforward, hopefully.
These people could identify themselves.
Yes, okay. She doesn't wanna speak though.
That's good.
She wants to keep his secret.
Judy Reynolds.
Judy Reynolds is here to speak, if anybody has any questions, John, on the 61A release on Holden Road?
Yep, good.
Did you get a chance to look at it?
I did, I mean, it was approved, looking at it now too, I mean, it was approved by all the key of all, all the assessors, planning and conservation not to purchase, and it seems pretty straightforward, I mean, three acres being taken out on 53 Holden Road, and there's no reason obviously for our county to purchase it, so I'm in favor of voting to approve releasing the assessment request.
David?
I'm not so in favor.
Then I would entertain a motion to actually, does anybody have any questions regarding this? This is a release of properties up on Holden Road?
Hey, Maureen, one quick question?
Yes?
One quick question, I have on the, the application, the mortgage deed, it indicated that the deed is to be delivered on or before October 27th, which is gone by, so I presume that that date is certainly gonna be updated to, to current date, post our approval tonight.
It's been updated till the end of November.
It has been updated, John, till the end of November.
Oh, good, okay, all right. And I'd like to, thank you.
So I recommend a motion for the release of 53 Holden Road from 61A.
Move to release in those words.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Then roll call?
Kilcoyne, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant, aye. You're all set, Judy? Yeah?
You voted to release it, but you did not vote to.
Oh, release and not purchase.
Right.
All right, and as John indicated, all the significant boards involved in that actually have voted not to purchase and release. So that's the assessors, the planning, CBA, everybody, everybody's on the same page. As usual.
All good.
But good. All right, and next is the public hearing for the tax classification, for which we have the Board of Assessors here. And Richard, you wanna introduce Rod and David?
Start it off if you want. Shepherd, member of the Board of Assessors, unfortunately, yet Donlan could not be here this evening, he's determined. And I don't see Hannah anywhere around, so she's also a member. But we have sent you a letter, which you should have to start this off, and I guess I would simply say that, as I've said in the past, there's good news and bad news. The good news is that we have dropped the tax rate for the seventh year in a row, down from eighteen thirty-three to now fourteen thirty-two.
Excuse me, Maureen, I apologize, if you have to speak, you're just a couple little closer to the head table, so the voice is a little clearer on the phone.
Just bring the whole podium up, Richard.
You want me to just move up this way? I don't, I don't want, I wanna move that thing up there, I don't want to move that one, thank you very much. Very good, all right, you're hired. All right, take it back.
Thank you, thank you, dear.
Is that it, John?
Is that good?
Go ahead.
John?
All good, much better.
Okay, good. So that is, that's, that's the good news. The bad news really is that, and I'll explain that in a few minutes, but is that valuations continue to rise. And as valuations continue to rise, and DOR mandates that we set things, your assessment by, by valuations, your overall tax rate will go up, but by reducing the tax rate, we've actually offset that to some extent, not a great extent, but a, but a little bit. There, and the primary role for this meeting is to, in the end, as you see at the very end of this thing in the recommendations, is to set a tax shift. But before we get to that, two things, we as a board hire RRG, Regional Resource Group, out of Lemonster, and we have with us tonight, the president, he's promoted, so he's, I think the last time we were here, I don't know when he was, associate or assistant vice president or something like that. But David Manzello is the, is currently the president of RRG. And because his duties take him to other communities, he has hired and has appointed Rob Heckman, who is sitting right here. Rob, thank you. And Rob will be in our office downstairs on Mondays generally, to work on our taxation and various aspects of the Assessor's Office. So with that said, I'm gonna turn this over, unless somebody has any questions specifically for me. I'm gonna turn this over to David, and David can then get, get Rob to participate in this as well.
Good evening, everybody. Does anybody wanna copy of the document? We've got a couple here, wanna share.
David, how long have you been working with Sterling?
I have been here, this would be my eighteenth year.
I think that's important for people to understand, you know.
So as my role has grown with Regional Resource Group, and taken me into more managerial roles, I'll still obviously be a voice and connection for Sterling, any kind of things that anybody needs can reach out to me. But on the day-to-day tasks, Rob has come to us, he's been with us a few weeks, months, now? Couple months. And he's got a great background as a real estate paralegal, several years doing that. So he brings a wealth of knowledge to the job already, so that's a great thing. So I'm gonna be sticking around, I'll be in the background doing, doing values, and he's gonna be doing most of the day-to-day type of tasks going forward. But back to our task at hand, classification hearing, it's that time of year again, so for those that have the handout, I know the selectmen have it here, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but I just wanna point out some significant changes from last year, and then we'll talk about what the classification piece of single or split tax rate. So on page three, I just wanna point out what we're estimated to raise in the levy for this year is twenty-one million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-nine cents. So it was an inevitable, we've been very frugal here over the last few years, I think last year the levy only increased like point two-five percent, that the levy was gonna have to go up. So we're seeing an increase of six point one-nine percent, almost six point two, over last year's levy of twenty million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. Our levy ceiling, so what that represents is two and a half percent of the total taxable value in town. So Sterling's current total taxable value is one billion, five hundred and sixteen million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Two and a half percent of that means that we, through overrides or whatever the town needed, we could appropriate thirty-seven million, nine hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. New growth, so new growth is anything that is an addition from last year that was not taxed in the prior fiscal year. So new homes, additions to your property, new lots, new business, personal property, any of those types of things are new growth. So in taxable dollars, we had two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars in new growth. It's down slightly over some prior years, but overall, it's still a pretty good number. All right, I'm gonna skip down to how we get these numbers to the middle grid of the levy breakdown. So you always, there's a little typo there, so it should say fiscal year twenty-two on the middle column, not twenty-one. We always start with twenty-two, which was the twenty-one million, four thirty-seven, two oh nine. Prop two and a half basically says, okay, you can add in automatically two and a half percent of the prior fiscal year's levy, so that's the five thirty-five, nine thirty number. We add in our new growth of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars, and we get to twenty-two million, two thirty-eight, two twenty-two. If we did not have excluded debts or anything else passed through town meetings, that would be the maximum that we could raise the levy. But we do have excluded debt of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which gets us to the twenty-two million, five twenty-six, one fifty-one. Down below that, we're gonna see all of our valuations by the major classes in, that we value, so your residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Residential makes up eighty, almost eighty-nine percent of where we raise our taxation. The rest is the three point five, four point five, and three point seven. So you can see that residential class has climbed exponentially, based on market conditions, we're up thirteen point seven percent from last fiscal year. But we do have a strong industrial, personal property base in the town that has increased as well. So overall, our valuation has increased thirteen percent on taxable value in town. So what we're here to discuss is the shifting of the tax burden. So we have historically had a single tax rate in the town, the Board of Assessors does continue to support this and recommend this for this current fiscal year. Sterling is a proactive farming, supportive community, so we have to keep in mind that if there was a shift, that affects all the chapter land folks and the farmers in town, so their land, their taxations would be affected by any shifts. If we were to do any kind of shift, because we have still a very small margin of the overall percentage that's in that CIP, a one percent shift would only reduce the single rate by two cents and increase the commercial, industrial, personal, personal property rate by fourteen cents. If you were to do a ten percent shift, it would decrease the residential rate nineteen cents and increase the CIP by a dollar forty-three. So you can see what our proposed tax rate is right now in the middle column at fourteen dollars and thirty-two cents. That's down from the fifteen twenty-five in fiscal twenty-two. What does that look like on a tax impact? So fiscal twenty-three, the average single-family valuation has increased from four-ten-four to four hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Keep in mind, this average single-family is fictitious, this is just our total valuation of single families divided by the total number of single families. There's a lot of variations of style, size, acreage, and so forth. But just to give you an idea of what an average bill change would be, so the average increase, fifty-five thousand dollars, average tax increase would be four hundred and six dollars for the year, not per bill, but for the year. So again, the Board of Assessors recommends keeping a single shift factor at one point oh, with our levy to be twenty-one million, seven hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-nine cents. And we have an excess levy capacity in the amount of eight hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. What that means is that's extra money that if we needed to, we could appropriate that, but even with the six percent increase in the levy, we've been still pretty frugal and haven't used all the levy that we have. So that is my presentation, open for questions.
He did.
On the beginning, yep.
Attention, Richard.
Hi, everyone, my name's Robert Heckman, I am from the area, I grew up in Lemonster. I spent six or seven, six and a half years or so as a real estate paralegal, and signed up with RRG to join on and become an assessor. So I'm pretty new with the situation, but I think I have a good background, and if you wanna work with me, I'd love to work for you, so, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
You're welcome.
David, do you have any questions?
I do not. I think they did, they did their job on putting this together.
Yeah, I could put John on mute.
We do have a timer.
I did have one question on it, it's okay.
I know you do. Go ahead, John.
Not a major one, just for my own education, I just. I just see this thing once a year. On page three, under terminology, classification, where it says, under levy, it says this represents a 6.2% increase over last year's levy of $20,444,413. So I was wondering why that number is, I know these probably because it's fluctuation, everything fluctuates between now and town meeting. But in a perfect world, would that levy number of $20,444 drop down to the bottom of the page where it starts the fiscal year 2022 levy, where it shows that it's $21,437,209? $200,000.
Right.
Is that because of fluctuations between now and your fiscal year end?
No, that's because we didn't use the full levy last year. Last year, we had, I think it was just over a million dollars or just under a million dollars of excess levy capacity. So like we-
Okay, I would just second that. We wouldn't use the full levy. That's why I thought that that number, the fiscal year 2022 levy, might be the actual levy shown above of $20,444. That was my only question. I just, you know, apples to apples, but-
Right. No, we always use what we could appropriate, not what we actually did appropriate.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, it shows we still have a good excess capacity this year too. You know, people get confused sometimes. I mean, but the bottom line here for the taxpayers, the residents to know, is that given all the increases in inflation and everything else, 6.49% increase in the residential valuations, that translates into the $400 average tax increase on the average home ours, residential valuation. So as I, you know, as Bill mentioned to me, that's $100 a quarter. Now hopefully, we can keep that the same. But again, a lot of numbers fluctuate between now and fiscal year end in June, including our town meeting. So a lot happens there, and that will affect what the bottom lines are here. But at least the tax rate has gone down to offset the increase in the valuation. So yeah, good job, very nice job putting all this together.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for David?
Since the first half bills were in estimated-
Yep.
What will this represent in the latter two quarters in terms of if you use this average family valuation?
Typically, you will see your actual bills higher than what your prelims were.
Yeah, what I'm asking is, you know, it looks like $400, but is it really going to be 200 in each one of them? If you were using the average valuation here, or is it going to hit harder than that?
It's all dependent on the value and of-
The property?
So it could be different.
Almost said worse.
Could be worse. So yeah, it's very tough to say what it would be. So if it was the average property-
That would have been-
I guess hypothetically, it should be 200 per bill.
Yeah, but is it going to be based on the estimated tax bill for the evaluation at $465,400? That would have been good to have in this presentation.
Yeah, okay. Well, food for thought to add for next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to just quickly say that I know people are anxious with the market changes as far as mortgage interest rates and what's the market going to do. Just to point out to everybody that assessed values are almost two years or about 18 months behind current market. So come calendar year '23, if we start to see values fall, we will react to it, but that won't affect us until fiscal '25. As of now, I am like looking at the market in Wester County almost monthly to see what's going on. I'm still, I just did a report today, still seeing people paying 1% over asking price on properties. So it's down from 5% over. So it's come down a little bit, but it's still a very strong market with people paying over asking prices.
So do you base the evaluations on what it sells for as opposed to what it's actually valued at? So if I buy a house for 1% more, you're going to do that valuation on the 1% more?
If it's on the open market and there's a willing buyer and a willing seller with no duress, those are the sales that we use for the targets of valuation adjustments.
Because it's been crazy.
Yep.
And it's always based on the January 1st of the previous year.
Previous year.
All right, anything else?
One more question. Since you projected a 13% this year, do you have any forecast for the January 2023 estimate? I'm a finance guy, so-
Yeah, no, I don't, because we don't get the deeds for like quite a while after things close. So we don't even have the full calendar year '22 yet to look at.
When will we have the valuation roll for calendar year 2023?
This time next year.
Sometime in January, right?
For calendar '22 or '23?
The new assessment in 2023, when does that come out?
The values are approved and set for fiscal '23, and we will work to get those on the Assessors' webpage Monday.
2023?
For fiscal '23, yes.
Based on January 1st, 2022?
22.
Okay.
I just want to add that this tax rate that I mentioned earlier, 1432, which is, you know, it's been coming down, obviously. A lot of that, we give credit to department heads in the town who keep their budgets within reason, to the Finance Committee who goes over those budgets and looks at it and really scrutinizes them to keep them down. So it's not just the Board of Assessors that sit here and demand that we try to bring the tax rate down, but you know, it's nice that it's been, it's come down for seven years in a row. I think the high was 1833. I mentioned that earlier. But it's, hopefully, we can continue to do that, and it's our overall fiscal situation that we have with our department heads. They keep things in check, and they certainly try to do things. And we have Finance Committee that kind of demands that they do that if at all possible. So thank you very much.
All right, so we need to take a vote on this, John. And so I would make a motion that the Sterling Select Board votes in accordance with MGL Chapter 40, Section, I'm sorry, I have to read this all, people, but out loud. Section 56, as amended, the percentage of local tax levy which will be, which will be borne by each class of real and personal property relative to setting the fiscal year 2023 tax rates and set the residential factor at point, no, one point, with a corresponding CP shift of one, pending certification of the town's annual tax recap by the Mass Department of Revenue.
I'll call it a second.
That was a lot. It's like move forward, David.
Yeah, we'll move forward.
All those in favor?
Will Corinay.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. Really, in essence, we don't have a lot to say about it, do we? Part of mine, yeah.
At the end of the day.
Yeah, like Richard said, what we need to do is just keep doing what the Finance Committee does.
You know, you, I mean, you obviously have the right to be able to do that, but I might mention, and David didn't mention this, but the city of Fitchburg, I think it was last year or the year before, went from a shift of two to a shift of one. And part of the reason they did that was because they're losing a lot of industrial base, and they wanted to bring that back into the community. So they have obviously recognized the change here. And I don't know if there are other communities, you may see others that are doing the same thing, but-
Sure. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Rob, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Sterling.
Thank you, appreciate it.
David, congratulations on the promo. Hope to see you around. Richard, thank you. Okay, with all that being said and done, I would entertain a motion to exit our public hearing on this November 9th, 2022.
I'll move.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Will Corinay.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. And with that being said, I move to open our regular meeting and proceed with our agenda.
Good, good.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Will Corinay.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. Okay. All right, and now we'll get to, I know, right? We're going to get to Mr. Lavin for the New England Truck Design, Inc. Looking for the Class 1 dealer's license for Leominster Road. And I think it's important, why don't you introduce yourself?
My name's Kevin Lavin from New England Truck Design.
Tell the public what you're doing, Kevin.
Well, we're looking to sell new equipment trailers. It's an extension of a product line we sell currently, EB Truck Bodies. They make beautiful trailers. The truck bodies, we've never needed a permit because they're not registered vehicles. And so I'm just looking to extend our product line and represent them. I believe I'm the sole dealer for EB equipment in Massachusetts. So we hope to draw some more people our way and start selling their equipment trailers.
Any questions, David?
No, just a statement. I know Kevin, I've been to his establishment. He runs a nice operation, very clean.
Is this a brand-new operation, Kevin, or have you operated this location prior to this?
Yes, I've been there over 20 years, 275 Leominster Road. And so this is just an addition to what we do now. We're known for our custom aluminum truck bodies, and we build pretty well all over the eastern part of the country, you know, on a small scale. It's just I'm looking to extend our product line.
Yeah, good. Thank you. More so.
And I would mention that you've already been to the ZBA, and they have approved this as far-
Yes, I applied for the special permit, and they have approved it, yes.
So with that being said, I have no problems with entertaining a motion to approve the Class 1 auto dealer license for Mr. Lavin at 275 Leominster Road.
I'll move.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Will Corinay.
Smith, aye.
Krantz and aye. And thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for operating in Sterling. We appreciate that.
You have a nice night.
A lot. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, we started talking about this at our last meeting very briefly, but the Senior Center is looking to do some work over there, and they would like us to consider giving them some of the remaining Senior Center building funds. So we didn't get into it deeply because I felt as though the Senior Center, Liz particularly, should be able to give a presentation as well as Mr. Mackey, who is representing the Building Committee. So Liz, you want to? You look surprised.
No, no.
Surprise! We do have the information, but I think general public, et cetera, and so on.
A general summary of the proposal. So thank you, Select Board, for this opportunity to present. And in summary, the Senior Center Director came to the Council on Aging with concerns about the curb appeal and the condition of the outside area. And upon hearing those concerns, the Council voted to ask for assistance from a landscape contractor, and a plan was developed that focused on three areas. The grassy areas that are overrun with crabgrass and are not drought tolerant and would require irrigation, curb appeal, especially the berm area, and low use of the patio area. So those were the three areas that we were looking at. We had great assistance from the DPW who have agreed to help us with the berm area. We've reached out to Scouts. They're going to help us with some of the recommendations for Phase 1 with the mulching, and they will be doing that as Eagle Scout projects beginning in spring. And David, I'm sorry, I didn't give my name and address. You were looking at me. Liz Pape Elliott Road. So we did a phased approach, and the first phase was to correct, to amend some of the soil in that area and do that. We started on that this fall. We have done some of the de-thatching. We've instituted a maintenance plan in the first phase of that maintenance plan from an outside contractor has begun, and that involved liming and fertilizing that area. In addition, we planted some trees and shrubs for curb and visual appeal. And that is part of our proposal would be that the amount of that was $2,344, and we are requesting of the Building Committee funds in the amount of $1,144. For the second part of Phase 1, which would be for the spring, which would involve the area that is very drought intolerant and has a lot of crabgrass that would need some amendments and reseeding, and we haven't gotten firm quotes yet on that, but we're estimating, based upon walkthroughs that I've done with landscape contractors, approximately $8,000, which also includes watering of those areas. And so we are asking for $4,000 from building funds, $4,000 to come from Sterling Senior Center funds from the gift account. And the first part also involves from the gift account. So we built a plan that has phases in it, and we are executing on each phase and then assessing the impact on use of the outside area. The second phase involves some work around the patio area, which has low use currently. And so the second phase would possibly involve a shade device over a portion of that patio area as described in the landscape plan that I sent to you, as well as some plantings for visual appeal around that area. And for that, it's more difficult to come up with an estimate since we haven't decided on what a plan or what a design would be for that trellis area. But that would be primarily, that trellis shading area would be primarily funded from the building funds, and then the plantings could be funded from the gift account. So in summary, we're looking for shared resources between the Building Committee funds and what is in the Senior Center gift account. Any questions?
The $8,000 that you mentioned, is that the one-time fee? Is it an annual fee? Is there maintenance attached to that?
No, that is for the planting, the seeding of, and soil amendment of Area 2, which is that lower area facing onto Muddy Pond Road. And so that's just the one-time seeding of that, we hope, but then it would be the watering. And so that's why we're saying we're really looking for a solution that involves planting drought-tolerant seed or plants there so that there is not a lot of watering that needs to be done for that. With walkthroughs with landscape contractors, some were suggesting putting in an irrigation system, and that's just not a possibility for the Senior Center right now.
For this initial seeding, et cetera, and so on, do you have a maintenance plan?
Yes, we have.
Taking care of that?
So the maintenance plan is being done through a recommendation of the DPW Grounds Manager by Old Stone Landscape, and it was Old Stone Landscape that we used to do this initial fall maintenance of the liming and fertilizing. And then there are four separate times that they do different kinds of maintenance on that area, overseeding, grub control, weed control, those types of things. So we have a calendar of those four separate events. There are some optional items for core aeration and as needed, and every one of those events has a price tag associated with it.
And how is that going to be funded as- And how is that gonna be funded as you move forward?
That is funded through the Senior Center Operations Account that was already put into the budget per our Town Administrator's, um, recommendation. So that is taken care of, and the estimate that we have received is within that budget line item.
That's currently in the fiscal year, in this year's budget.
Right.
It's already, we've already established a maintenance, it's, it's in our maintenance budget and the Senior Center Operations budget.
This is Veronica Buckley, if anybody knows.
Sorry.
Speaking on the sidelines.
Sorry.
Um, okay, so.
So it becomes a regular part of the Senior Center Operations Budget going forward?
And that's above and beyond what you already have budgeted for the plowing, et cetera, that, that, the Senior Center?
Okay, um, Veronica Buckley, the Director of the Senior Center, just, so, um, there was a, a lot, a three thousand dollar allotment to, um, um, maintenance of the grounds that was put into this budget this current year, so it's already in the fiscal year twenty-two budget. We're anticipating that with that amount, we will be able to continue fiscal year twenty-three with just a repeat of that amount. That's what we're, um, as this plan was done, as, as Liz explained, it is to be low maintenance and drought tolerant, so we feel that that's a reasonable amount to, to move forward with. Does that make sense? And I do not budget plowing, if that's what you're asking?
That's kinda included in your operations budget, well, no, I guess it's moved over.
It's included in the DPW, yes, so it's not in our budget, but the maintenance, the grounds maintenance is included in our budget.
And that's gonna be done by an outside?
Yep. Um, DPW has been tremendous in helping us with this landscaping plan, providing advice, walking through the project with me several times and saying that they will assist with the berm renovation work. Um, I cannot say enough good words about all members of the DPW for their assistance.
John, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just want, my focus just came on while Veronica was speaking, so I didn't catch all of it, but it's about to turn off, but I think I got enough gist of it, but my que, not that you need to know that, but my, uh, my question is, uh, to your proposal, I just wanna make sure I understand that the finances, uh, the request from, uh, for the Phase One and Phase Two, it looks like Phase One, uh, the proposal is to split up costs, uh, which would be fifty-two hundred each, so fifty-two hundred would be requested from the Senior Center Building Committee. And then, uh, you want a bit of plantings, that's two thousand three hundred forty-four dollars, so I'm guessing that's about another, call it twelve fifty.
No, John.
I'm looking at, I'm coming up to about sixty-four, sixty-five hundred dollars, which I think is reasonable, but am I missing something? Is there more, a higher request or not?
John, you're gonna be really excited because what I'm going to tell you is it's way more reasonable because in the narrative that I gave, where I gave that estimate of, um, approximately fifty-two hundred dollars, um, that was for the fall and spring work. Um, the fall work actually came in at twenty-three forty-four, so that's on the table on the third page, and so the all activity total is twenty-three forty-four, twelve hundred funded through the gift account at the Senior Center and eleven forty-four requested of the building funds.
Okay, well, I mean, it seems, it seems reasonable for, I mean, it seems like we're putting aside, we're not completing the entire amount left over in the building funds, so I think if, if I'm gonna, sounds reasonable to me, I mean, it looks like we're preserving enough money to, uh, earmark it for a, a, a trellis or a, uh, you know, a shade device over the patio, which hopefully won't cost a fortune, but am I, am I, am I mistaken on, I think that's.
Yeah.
How I have it, right, okay, all right.
John, yeah.
Yep.
Right now, we're just talking about the first phase. We're gonna listen to Mr. Mackey, you have his information also. The Building Committee has, um, different ideas, not that we don't want to share the money, I can't even say we anymore because we're the Funt Committee, but, um, so we'll listen to what Mr. Mackey has to say, that he sent us his information also, and he speaks for the building, the, the Funt Building Committee.
Yeah. I go, thank you, I go, I go.
Before we make a decision.
So just a question for me.
Okay.
It's fifty-one forty-four, you're asking from there right now?
Correct.
The four thousand and the eleven forty-four?
Correct, four thousand, yes, yes, yes. And the four thousand from the Building Committee is an estimate. We are anticipating that going out for quotes will lower that, and we are looking for alternatives to the irrigation piece because that was irrigation provided by a contractor, and we're trying to figure out what an alternative would be, so that would eliminate a substantial amount of that estimate.
Just one thing, if you wanna make a note, um, somebody had told somebody else that, um, you were planning on planting clover, and the neighbors are not happy about that idea, just as you move forward.
Okay, so, um, okay, thank you.
I don't know if that was really a thing or not, but.
Um, that was one of the drought-tolerant questions that I was asking of the DPW, what would be ramifications of that? I asked that of contractors. We were also asking about what kinds of drought-tolerant, like native seeds were available, so it's still in research phase right now for figuring out what to do with that area too, that I call Death Valley, 'cause it's kind of sad.
Well, there's sadder.
Thank you.
Mr. Mackey?
Good evening. Um, speaking for the, um, Building Committee, uh, I'd like to point out a couple of things. First of all, I'm very pleased to see that some of the numbers that are being presented tonight are significantly lower than the numbers that were originally presented a couple of months ago, and that's a good thing. This issue really is about the order of the Senior Center projects and the cost. Do we do the landscaping first and then the pergola or trellis or whatever the shelter is, or we do it in the reverse? Is that how we're going to spend the approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars that we have available from, from being very careful with, uh, the building funds and also accepting almost two hundred thousand dollars in donations from foundations, individuals, businesses, banks, and so on? Uh, the priority, in my opinion, or in the opinion of the Building Committee, should be to give the seniors protection from the sun for outdoor activities at the patio itself. Unfortunately, skin cancer is a progressive thing and it's probably a good idea to keep everybody, not just, um, senior citizens, under as much reasonable protection as we can. And so that would be the reason for having, uh, a pergola or some type of shelter present. Um, the, the shelter, of course, would be a permanent feature. The landscaping, uh, is dependent to some degree on what Mother Nature throws our way. Uh, you know that this year in July and August, we had almost no precipitation. In September and October, we had well over twelve inches of precipitation, that's three times the, the normal monthly amount. Um, in both cases, both the shelter and the landscaping requires maintenance. The maintenance on the shelter, depending on the materials that are used, could either be minimal or it could be significant, and it's one of the factors in choosing the material for the shelter. Uh, in, in a communication from the Senior Center, uh, the question that was raised by the Building Commission, uh, Committee dealt with, uh, who is raising the money that they, uh, would like to spend in later years? If it's money that's coming from the Friends of the Sterling Seniors, I would just point out that, I can't speak for them, but I can point out that, uh, the money that we're currently putting into the Senior Center is pretty much our maximum amount, and it would be asking a lot to ask us to contribute a significant amount over a number of years for the project. Landscaping, uh, what I saw originally was a five-year plan with twenty thousand dollars budgeted annually. I hear this evening that that idea, at least for the first two years, is significantly less than that, and as I said, that's a step in the right direction. Uh, to put that into perspective, that twenty thousand dollars a year, the Recreation Department, uh, takes care of the Griffin Road and Muddy Pond, uh, uh, fields for about fifteen thousand dollars in a year. So if, if the amount that we're eventually looking at is closer to the twenty, I'd say that that sounds excessive. DPW does do the mowing, uh, they're not able really to do the detailed maintenance, and we heard tonight from Liz that, um, DPW has been extremely cooperative in the past, not only with this project, but tons of other departments in town, and also that they are willing to help out wherever they can. We have to consider the climate variations, we're in a, a period clearly where the variations in climate are somewhat unpredictable, and whatever is done with the landscaping needs to be taken into consideration. Uh, the concept of having, uh, drought-resistant plants is a valid one, um, they don't call them drought-proof plants, no one calls them that, uh, and that's because of the climate variations. Uh, the maintenance plan, uh, if it's limited to, um, three, was it three thousand dollars? Um, that, that sounds like a reasonable number. So there are a lot of, uh, issues here that the Board has to consider. There are a variety of ways in which you can answer the situation, and I'm not gonna enumerate those ways, but, um, we have thirty-eight thousand dollars, and I'll go back to what I said earlier. Do we provide a shelter that's a permanent thing and, and can be done in the spring once and done, or do we put that money into landscaping over a longer period of time? Um, I would prefer to have a fixed structure, uh, that's there for everybody to utilize for the future. Questions?
David, any questions?
Well, no, I don't have any questions.
Have any answers?
No, but I just, you know, in a perfect world, both of these projects would be nice to get funded and get completed, uh, but I'm gonna have to lean towards Mr. Mackey's idea of, uh, I think, uh, a shelter on the back deck is probably a better investment at this point in time, whereas Death Valley is pretty much dead. Right? So, I think, um, I'd have to agree, agree with you, Dick, on the, on the shelter behind the building and, and try to come up with a reasonable plan to, uh, do the landscaping in future years.
I don't, if I can respond to that, David, I don't think it's unreasonable for the Senior Center to budget, uh, a specific amount for maintenance of, of that, uh, grassed area. If you take a look at it, depending on how much rain we get, uh, it is Death Valley in some places, no question about it, and it does need attention. It needs to be reseeded, it needs to be fertilized, bugfied, or whatever else goes on, uh, four times a year. So, uh, the, I don't believe the Building Committee has any objection to improving that, that part of the landscaping. It really is about how we're using the money and in what order.
John?
Yeah, Dick, uh, do we know what, what are the Senior Center folks, do we know what a sun shelter would cost, uh, for, for that structure up there?
Yeah, the numbers that we've seen, based on kits that are delivered to the site, go from about twenty-six thousand dollars for, uh, a shelter that's about twenty-eight feet long by eighteen feet wide, and that number goes up to about thirty-five or thirty-six thousand dollars and does not include local contractors that would have to assemble it. So you can tack on, you can tack on probably another four to six thousand dollars for a contractor to assemble the kits that, uh, all of the vendors that we've looked at, we've looked at three, all of them provide, uh, similar products. And we did look at, I mentioned earlier that the materials can make a difference. Uh, if you use wood, it's the cheapest way to do it. Unfortunately, wood, um, has to have more maintenance than anything else and probably ultimately has a shorter lifespan. Uh, if you use vinyl or a, a plastic-like product, uh, that has a longer lifetime, less maintenance, uh, than the wood, and then if you used aluminum or, or other metal, uh, that would have the longest lifetime, but it's also the most expensive. So the one in the middle is probably the, the vinyl or a composite product like that.
Okay, well, again, um, again, as I, as I mentioned earlier, I think it's wise to, uh, to at least set aside enough of that Building Committee fund, uh, towards the, uh, the shelter, the sun shelter, and hope, and hopes that it's not, once it's designed, uh, comes in and we know what it costs, hopefully there's some extra money available towards to get, you know, to contribute to the landscaping up there as well, you know, and all the fire, um, that's pie in the sky enough, but I, I, that's why I asked a question, what we think it might cost. I think maybe we oughta reserve it till we, reserve enough of it, or all of it for now, until we know what, uh, a shelter would cost, and then, and then go from there.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna kinda step away from the conversation because I have been involved in this from, from the beginning as far as the building is concerned, so, um, but, you know, when I say Dick speaks for the Building Committee, he's speaking for the, the four members that were still available after we realized we weren't a committee anymore, but, um, so, as, you know, my only thing is, we've said from the beginning that if there were any monies left over after the shelter was built, then it would go back to the Senior Center and to the landscaping. We've said that from the beginning. The other thing, and I think this is probably the bigger part of it, is the committee that the COA has put together for the landscaping project, which includes a pergola, actually, in the second phase, um, as Dick said, they wanna be involved in choosing the design, et cetera, and, um, and I don't think anybody has a problem with that. Um, I'm all for, you know, there were some suggestions that, uh, you know, we pass this over to the TA to, um, actually, uh, execute as far as, um, how and when and where the funding comes from, 'cause you're more aware of what funding is available. I know there's, there's, you have other funding too, Veronica, that you can use towards, like the, the shelter.
Correct.
Yeah, so, so it doesn't all have to be the thirty-eight from the Building Committee, there's formula money that can be used towards the pergola, which gives more money to the landscaping, 'cause you can't use the formula money for landscaping.
Right, formula grant would be for senior needs.
Right.
Shelter on the patio would be part of a senior need, correct?
So, so we can, you know, put the monies all in a pot and share it, and then, and then move forward.
May I just make one clarification, please?
Yeah.
Um, for the folks that are out there gonna be listening to this, um, over the next few days, um, there is no twenty thousand dollar capital budget request being put in for landscaping.
That's correct.
Currently, so, uh, you know, um, it, that was stated, and the Senior Center and the Council on Aging have decided not to do that, so I want the townspeople to know that. Our, our intention is to keep costs of the landscaping plan as low as possible and to self-fund from the variety of sources that are currently available, so.
To clarify.
It makes it sound that, like this is a very expensive landscaping plan, and it is not, we're working very, very hard to keep the costs down.
Yeah, it's okay, so good.
Yeah.
So, um, so that, that would be, I think, Bill, if you would work with all of the people involved, you know, Richard, myself, or Kevin Bopray, who is also with the COA and Liz and, and Gail, and come together, obviously, right now, we're not gonna do anything other than what you've already done.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, everything will have to wait until the spring, but we wanna assure Mr. King that we are not going to the town meeting for any money. All right? So you can breathe now, Joe. All right, I think there's enough funds amongst the gift, the formula, and the building that we can all share it and get everything done that we need to get done in the spring. Um, and yes, include the Landscaping Committee and, and some of the designs that we've already looked at. Okay? Do you feel good about that?
Overjoyed.
Yeah, sure you are. Richard, you all right? Liz, Gail, Veronica, Joe? All right. So we don't need to actually take a vote on that, do we? Unless you want us to underscore the fact that you, Billy, are at large in charge.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so that's that, and then we're gonna move along, um, to our very. And then we're going to move along to our very patient Mr. French.
Ooh.
Ooh.
Save it.
Oh, my God. You're a killer, John.
I didn't know you could hear me.
Oh, we all heard you. And the room was full.
So, thank you. I'm Jim French, and I'm here representing the Sterling Land Trust. And, and the land trust has been assisting Ms. Phyllis George and her five children, who own property over on South Nelson Road, who have applied to the Division of Conservation Services for a conservation, to place a conservation restriction on approximately 23 of the 25 acres that they own there. The family is keen on placing protective covenants on the property. It's actually considered prime woodland. And the exciting thing about this property is that it abuts Sterling's largest wild, roadless area of over 1,000 acres. And it has, it's a nice addition to a large conservation block and wildlife corridor in that part of town. So the Division of Conservation Services requires municipal approval for conservation restrictions before they approve it at their end in their Boston office. So that is my purpose for being here this evening.
Wait, you Google it?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Would you have any, John, do you have any questions for Mr. French with regards to this property on South Nelson?
No, I mean, in perpetuity, I mean, it's on, I guess, 22.85 acres, is that correct?
Yes. It is in perpetuity.
And it's a 23 acre parcel, I believe?
Approximately.
It abuts other properties that are also in the preservation.
It abuts other conservation land, conservation restriction land, it abuts Division of, Department of Conservation Recreation land, it abuts other Sterling Land Trust property.
I would think this would be in the spirit of the open space portion of the master plan as well. I mean, I'm trying to think of any negative, you know, items here, right? I really don't. I don't see any real downside unless I'm missing something.
You're not. Go ahead, David.
No, I think it's a great move, because you're open space.
So, Jim, the logging that we see here is just.
Yeah, she happens, she has a forest stewardship plan that she recently hired a forester to put on her property. And that forester has arranged for a thinning of some of the timber on her property to bring Phyllis George some income that she, that she could enjoy on her property. And the whole idea of preserving this woodland is that into the future, there will be cycles of forest products coming off it in perpetuity.
So.
So under a conservation restriction, the family continues to own the property, but the conservation restriction is held by the Sterling Land Trust.
Okay. So what would you like us to do?
I would like you to kindly vote approval to sign the conservation restriction so that we can then bring it back to the Secretary of Environmental Affairs in Boston. Her final signature makes it real.
Is this the only copy we have that we have to sign off on?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Per chance, we sign off on it. I would entertain a motion to approve this.
There was a hand on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there an impact on the property tax assessment of doing this?
Are you asking me that question?
Yes.
I'll try to answer. So I'm going to say no, because she has the property in Chapter 61 for forest and classification. She will continue to be the owner of record and continue to be in Chapter 61, so the tax consequences do not change.
Thank you.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve Ms. George or Mr. French's request for the restrictions on South Nelson Road?
Don't move.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Go for it, Mike.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. French. EDC appointment, are we actually doing that this evening? Is he coming in?
I don't see him, he's invited.
So we have a volunteer application for, it's for the EDC, Joe, sorry.
I'll have her.
The Economic Development Committee, Mr. Stover. Yeah, he doesn't really have, EDC has interviewed him?
Yes.
Sat with him?
Yes.
And you're all moving him forward?
Yes.
Okay. Have you met him, Bill? Also?
He was at a meeting a month ago.
Yeah. Okay. And he's a board director and a CEO. He's just one of those people, Joe, but he wants to start at the EDC so far.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm their liaison, so I would encourage.
Okay. Any thoughts, comments? David?
I have none.
John, any thoughts or comments on Mr. Stover being appointed to the EDC?
Well, looks like a good volunteer. Happy to have him.
He walks and he breathes, so I'll make him a board. Yeah, I would say thank you, Mr. Stover, and I look forward to meeting him in the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
I'd entertain a motion to appoint Mark Stover to the Economic Development Committee.
Don't move.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Go for it, Mike.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. Kama, can you send him a note and tell him he needs to come in and get sworn in and take the ethics test?
Just clearing my throat.
Oh, I beg your pardon?
Just clearing my throat.
Okay. I thought you wanted more attention. Okay. All right, next thing on the agenda is a town accountant update.
So as you know, back in April, Fred had left us for another community and stayed on part-time with the assistance of the Assistant Treasurer, taking care of things in the building. We have the opportunity to bring Fred back full-time if there are no objections. Yeah, that's about it.
Okay, what is duty three when you say he's coming back?
So he would be back as the, what he was when he left, the operations manager and the town accountant, so he would take on a couple of projects, IT and some of the facilities things that the town administrator doesn't pitch to you sometimes.
You're going to pass this whole senior center thing off on him, aren't you? It's the way it's. David, any questions?
No, it's not your question, but a concern about the individual that has stepped up and been performing their duties.
Right.
On a part-time basis.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody concerned about any fallout from that?
She's aware, and, you know, it was temporary until something happened, so.
John, any comments?
No, I mean, yeah, okay, we all want Fred back, you know, a very quality executive. And we're lucky that I think he came back, but along David's lines, I'd like to continue to see Liz somehow interact with Fred going forward and some of the things he's already done. Because as we know, nervous of getting any younger, Fred won't be here forever either, so I'd like to, you know, let him make sure Liz knows his goal.
Jesus.
Similar upward mobility and accounting as well as her own parole right now, so I think she did a great job. And, but I think it'll work. I think it'll work. I know Fred well, and we all feel, and he'll cooperate some of Liz's duties into what he's doing inter operations as well, and it'll be helpful for the town, for all of us. So I'm pleased with it. Oh, by the way, it's not going to cost us anywhere, is it?
I gotta tell you, John, I wish you were sitting here so I could slap you. Just say it.
I have him on me. I say it for bruises, I'm like, yes.
All right, no, I think it's, it's great. And I do know that Liz has other duties that, you know, this lightens her load a little bit. You know, all the personnel issues and so on and so forth. So, all right, and again, we don't need a vote on that. It's just a hiring. Yes, Mr. Patano?
Can the audience know why he left and why he's coming back?
He left because he thought he had a better job opportunity and less hours, and it did not really pan out. He walked into. He missed us. And he missed us. And he walked into a firestorm. They weren't completely upfront with him. So he's been looking. And when we heard he was looking, and we asked if he would be interested in coming back, you know, because we haven't filled a position at all, and gave it some thought, talked to Bill, coming back. So it's a good thing.
A good thing, definitely.
Well, particularly the, not just the accounting portion of it, but it was big as far as our IT portion in town, you know, and making sure everything was where it should be, how it should be, and working in conjunction with Guardian for our IT services, also working with SMLD with regards to the fiber, getting it into town, expanding it. He was integral in getting us the $350,000 that we got to actually start that program when Sean was here. So it was Fred and Sean that brought that money to town, and we've just built on that. And Fred was a big part of that. That's always a plus in municipalities, is when you have somebody that can, you know, white, yeah, white, write and work grants, so.
Things like, things like that should be brought up more often.
Things like what?
What these people do for us.
Agreed.
You're right.
You should be, you should be bringing it up a little more often.
I like that idea. And you know what, I'm gonna, right now, we're going to bring up the fact that what you do for us, as far as mowing and driving the bus and all your volunteer work, that should be, I mean, not just at the senior center where, yeah, you have the lunch every once in a while, but in general, you know, there's so many people that should be recognized for what they do, volunteers as well as employees. I mean, I can't even imagine what we would do without Kama. You know, she's, really, and people don't know half of the stuff that she does and the things she finds. So I agree with you, Bob. I think those are things that could, could and should come to the forefront. Maybe we put that on our agendas.
Thank you.
I study every single time. Like it.
Get more productivity.
Huh?
Might get more productivity.
Well, I'm not sure about that, Bob. You might just think we're better than the most, right? Okay. Next thing on our agenda is, if you remember, we got into a contract with the PFAs a couple of weeks ago, actually our last meeting, I think, or two meetings ago. But anyway, you want to tell us what's going on with that?
Yeah, so it was, we entered in with Sandman Lot, KPS. We thought, we were under the assumption that it was Notton.
Mr. Notton, Harold Notton, who came in and gave us a presentation originally.
Turns out that the second company had sent the contract roughly the same amount of time and given the presentation, and Notton's group is the one that is connected to KP Lot that is ours. So I would recommend, since it's only been a couple of weeks and they are aware of it, the Sandman Group, to discharge them and switch over to Napoli and, what's the second name? Go on.
Well, it's our pension anyway, so, you know, just.
Right. He came and made a couple of presentations over the years. And as that now gains a little momentum, probably better to stick with what is tied to our town council.
Yeah, which is the Napoli, can't even say the second name. I can spell it because it's here. Spinkalink.
Sure.
Spinalinkink. Okay, so I would entertain a motion that we move discharged Sandman and Company. And that has to be the first thing that we do. So I would entertain that motion.
Don't move.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Go for it, Mike.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. So if people aren't still up on this, this is the PFAs, the litigation that is out there that Harold Notton had come in, actually, probably a year ago, gave a presentation all about the water, what's in our water, what's not. And we don't have problems right now, but it's something that we should jump on the bandwagon with. It costs the town nothing to be involved in this. And yet, if the suit is settled, then we'll get money like we did with the opioid crisis.
Right.
So.
Yep.
All right, so then I would entertain a motion that we enter into the retainer agreement with Napoli, and I feel so bad that I can't say this. Shinkle off, Nick.
I thought it was Scott, Nikki, Skolnik, and Napoli, but.
All right.
We just pending review their contract to make sure it's no different than the other
one, very insignificantly different.
Yeah, it was, it was sent to town council and it was sent over to me.
Yeah.
And they're tied to KP.
Town council has already looked at it, John. They work with them, they're working on this with them too, so we're all set as far as that's concerned.
Thank you. Good. Okay, I'll move. We enter into that contract with Skolnik and Napoli. I think I got the name spelled right.
Sure.
As worded by Maureen.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Go for it, aye.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. I feel badly, but it's, all right. So we're going to do the TA's review this evening, or the town administrators' review, but we're going to put that off until our next meeting. Rather do it when John is actually present as well.
Yeah, that's good. Do we have a document? If all of us should be on the same page like we were with prior administrators, or it's just going to be more of an informal, verbal?
All right, we can talk about that offline, John.
All right.
We're going to move along now.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
All right, town administrators' report?
As you know, the binder code has been put down in a few places in the paving project. The top code will be done in the upcoming week or so, I believe, as of this afternoon. We did get grant award for the DPW grant for some work zone safety signage and ladders and OSHA items for that. I think it was 3,000 or so. Still waiting to hear on the ADA grant for the beach bathroom. I think it should be either later this month or the beginning of December. Still looking for library board volunteers. This would go until the next election due to a resignation. Treasurer and I, Treasurer and I are working on, and the accountant, the bond sale. We approved borrowing for 1.3 million dollars at last year's town meeting and a few hundred thousand dollars for things at the 2021 town meeting. So those now officially need to be bonded as those projects get rolling. So that should be on our December agenda. And then we do have our budget requests due in the beginning of January 1/6, and then the capital items are due at the end of next week. I know I had sent it off. Economic Development Bill has been passed, it looks like, by the, at the State House and is on the governor's desk or en route to the governor's desk. There is a potential for $100,000 for the school playground, which is nearing its completion. They were doing the rubber ground floor mat, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that could offset some of the ARPA money. So once we see that happen, that's potentially good news. Obviously, yesterday was election day, so the town clerk and the assistant town clerk and the poll workers, that was a long day for them, and obviously, they should all be thanked. I already mentioned the playground.
Pretty good turnout.
Very, just over two-thirds, I think.
Sixty-something percent. It's pretty good.
We did get word that Monty Tech will do the memorial wall in the spring for the Pegs Pond Project walking path. We have received our quotes. We have received our quotes, and we'll get moving forward there. There's a company, Shrewsbury, that's given us the best price. They do a significant amount of work with SMLD, so hopefully, I don't know if we're going to be able to get any of it done before the spring, but if not, we'll get it done this spring. Nothing new on the beach, I don't think so. We did receive some of the chairs for the 1835. We're going to move forward with the curtains upstairs that were planned in the great hall, and should be getting the quotes in for the acoustic soundboards up there in the great hall as well. And I think, and I've already mentioned, I was at the, we had received the grant, I was at the grant award ceremony today for the downtown grant for the engineering, for the underground work for water main and drainage.
Who else went with you, Bill? Anybody?
Me.
Sorry? I had to work for a minute.
I know.
Dave's work, John's sick. But that's good. And how much was that for?
$135 and change.
Okay.
So that will get all of the pre, pre-work, good to go, and paid for.
Is that it?
We, oh, and the town hall roof, those bids were due. The engineer or architect is going to do the reference checks, so I don't have an actual name of a company yet that we'll go with. One of them was not, not eligible on their bid, didn't have DCM certification, so we are checking the second lowest bidder.
All right, and we need to go back and, do you gentlemen both read the minutes that Kama has presented us?
I do.
Any changes?
None.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve our meeting minutes of October 26th.
Don't move.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Both agree.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. Just a couple of things, Veterans Day is Friday, and I know the senior center today celebrated the veterans with a luncheon and a dinner, and then we have to say a good thank you to Bobby Temple, who again pulled this thing together. We had a little parade downtown, a ceremony over at the memorial park. Wasn't as well-publicized as in the past, so we'll have to look at that next year. Mark your calendars for November 19th. The library craft fair will be held over at the First Church from 9:00 to 2:00. That's a big deal fundraiser for the libraries, so whatever support you can give them is a plus. One thing I forgot to thank Brian for was fixing the sign at the DPW so it looks decent. There's no more jersey barriers, it's standing on its own, it's got the right address on it. It's just amazing. I know. So cool. But David, you have anything?
I just want to thank everybody that came out for the parade on Sunday, and thank our veterans in the community and across the country, across the world, and voter turnout was, was pretty impressive. I'd like to thank the clerk's office and all the individuals that keep the polls operating. I mean, we couldn't do it without the volunteer efforts, so thanks to them.
Good turnout. John, anything from you?
Yeah, I mean, just what Dave said, I thank Tom Clark, Assistant County, and Michelle and the staff of volunteers and, they did a great job working many hours over the last, really, couple of months, but especially the last couple of weeks. So thank them, thank the voters for a great turnout, thank their collegiate and Bobby Temple for continuing to put on Veterans Day Parade, something not many towns do, it was, it's always terrific, it's just a great thing, and not even a shit of it, but everybody.
Okay. Joey.
I'm thinking you just emoted. I think I'll come back soon.
And Merry Christmas to you, Josh.
Happy Easter, while we're in it.
Valentine's Day.
Come on, that would be mine. Come on, Father David.
Anything, Joe, from finance or capital?
All set.
Okay. Anything you want to remind everybody of?
I'll send your props to me there, because we still have one opening pin come, and we have two opening capital budget committee. We'd like to fill them, so any volunteers out there would be most welcome to talk with them. Thank you.
Okay. Cam?
Just the bosses looking, Friends of the Sterling Seniors are looking for volunteers. We need them desperately.
Yep. Friends of the Sterling Seniors, that group that raises funds to support programming and nutrition programs, et cetera, at the senior center could use some fresh, new eyes and bodies. You can talk to Pam, you can talk to myself, you can send me a message on the Facebook page, it'd be great. Anything from you, Richard?
All set.
Veronica, all set?
All set, thank you.
Suzie Q?
All set.
Liz? Thanks for coming back, Gail. How was dinner?
Great.
Kama? Okay. And Billy, you're all set?
All set.
All right, I will take a motion.
One second. Just one second. We just tonight approved a permit for 275. If it's all right with the board, I would like to make that for 2023, so he doesn't have to reapply right now, because it's the next meeting that we have is when all of them would need to come forward. So as long as it's all right with you.
I'm okay with that.
Absolutely.
No, it's, it's an extension of his business.
Yeah, okay.
Not going to have a different impact on the neighbors or.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kama. With that, oh, take a motion to adjourn.
I am very excited right now, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Both agree.
Smith, aye.
Grant's an aye. Good night, John.
Good night, everybody. I was ready.
That's worse than.
Hi, Mr. Calabash.
I'm sorry. At least Zoom, you can mute people.